I now declare. I now call the order, the regularly scheduled meeting of the Nitrona County Board of County Commissioners for Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022 to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hendry.
Here.
Commissioner Milne.
Here.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Here.
Commissioner North.
Here.
Chairman Bertollio.
Here. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great justice for all.
Have a quick announcement tonight. Every year, the all county commissioners and our all 23 counties in the state are awarded four scholarships amounting to $500 per semester. We give three out tonight or announce three tonight that are first time recipients and we will have one more that will go to an applicant that we gave the scholarship to last year that will be eligible again for it this year. So with that, our three awardees this year are Lyric Wall, Kayla King, and Carson Jump. Would either would you be one of those? No? Okay. They will actually get this award on the 16th, 16th of May at Kelly Walsh. They're all three Kelly Walsh students. So congratulations to them. With that, the Chair entertain approval to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved by Commissioner Milne, seconded by Commissioner North. Any discussion or questions on any of the items? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signed motion carries. And now to declare the public hearing open for the consideration of case number 22.02 CUP pertaining to EIP Holdings LLC Telecommunications Tower, CP CUP, Lot 7, in Westgate Industrial Park at 1575 Derrick Drive. The applicant is proposing to construct 150-foot tall monopole and associated ground-mounted telecommunication commission or equipment within a 50 by 50-foot fenced leased area. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, rules of the Nitrona County Commission, and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the commission to approach the lecture and state your name and address when appropriate. May we have staff report?
Hi, yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners Megan Nellm, Senior Planner. Mr. Chairman gave us some background on the case. The location is in Westgate Park 3 on Lot 7, and the applicants are Everest Infrastructure Partners. Sarah Neese is their representative. And per Section 15 of the zoning resolution, it outlines requirements for communication towers and wireless telecommunication facilities. A conditional use permit is required for all commercial communications communication towers taller than 70 feet with antenna. The planning commission may recommend approval, approval with conditions, or deny an application for a communications tower under this section. And the planning commission may also impose conditions that are found necessary to ensure that the use is compatible with uses in the vicinity and that the negative impact of the tower on surrounding uses and public facilities is minimized. With that, the criteria for approval in our resolution, the applicant has provided sufficient evidence to support the tower location. This is tower location number five on the priority list. They've provided exhibits demonstrating the need for a new tower. The tower is situated to provide needed coverage and capacity for Westgate Industrial Subdivision, traffic along Highway 26, and residential homes to the west of the proposed site. Granting the permit will not contribute to an overburdening of county services, nor will it cause undue traffic parking, population density, or environmental problems. And the permit will not granting the permit will not detrimentally affect public health, safety, or welfare, nor nullify the intent of our development plan. The following considerations will apply to the permit. It will grant for 100 be granted for 150-foot tall monopole communications tower on Lot 7, Westgate Park 3. The applicant has requested a deviation from the setback requirement of 110% of the tower height per Section 15E 5B of our resolution, which states, "The Board of County Commissioners may grant a variance from the setback requirement if the applicant can prove provide structural drawings and plans signed by a Wyoming licensed engineer that certifies in the event the tower collapses, relief from the standard setbacks requirements would not pose a threat to the health and safety of adjacent property owners." Based on the information submitted by the applicant regarding the use of breakpoint technology with this tower design, staff recommends allowing that deviation from the setbacks and recommends the proposed setbacks be allowed 62 feet to the north parcel boundary, 69 to the east, 290 feet to the south parcel boundary, and 190 feet to the west. The applicant holder of the conditional use permit shall apply for recertification of the permit between 12 and six months prior to the five-year anniversary date of issuance of the permit, and the CUP shall remain valid and in effect as long as all conditions are met. And with that, staff recommends approval of the CUP. The planning commission also voted to recommend approval of the conditional use permit at their meeting on April 12th. And I can answer any questions, and the applicants are in the audience.
Okay. Questions? Commissioner Milne?
Good evening, Megan. Were there any conditions set forth by staff that you want to bring forth or anything like that?
No, I think this this permit is definitely well-covered. As you'll note in the minutes, the planning commission did table this case for a month requesting additional information from the applicants. We did not receive any inquiries or comments from surrounding property owners or any comments at all on this case. And the applicants did go, and I would like to commend them for the extra steps they took in providing additional tower design specifications from the engineer. You know, that's an extra cost to them when they generally won't go doing geotech and design of the tower until they have an approval of their conditional use permit and are ready to apply for building permits. So they turned in a lot more information than is normally required for approval of a conditional use permit for a tower.
And you did notify the or send notices?
We sent notices, and the planning commission also added a condition asking the applicants to attempt to get a letter from the adjacent property owners saying they were okay with the reduced setbacks. However, the surrounding property owner is National Oil Well, and it was difficult, and they did not obtain actual written okays from that company. But they did, they sent certified letters, made phone calls, and provided logs and records of all their attempts to contact them.
Thank you. About the questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Thank you. Thank you. Did the applicant indicate why they didn't try to maximize the setbacks from each property boundary?
There was brief discussion about that, but I'll let them answer to that.
Thank you.
There's no more questions for Ms. Nellm? Okay.
Hello, I'm Sarah Neese. My address is 9120 Dock Bar Court. That's in Elk Grove, California, 95624. I'm here on behalf of Everest Infrastructure Partners. My mom's in the audience with me because we sort of do family business together. And I, when I was looking for a location for this cell tower, I vetted maybe 15 parcels. I sent letters kind of all over that business park. We looked at the criteria laid out in the code and found that the industrial zone made the most sense, and that's exactly where there's sort of a center where cell coverage is needed over the highway, the business park, and homes to the west. And so I contacted a bunch of parcels, and I tried to get bigger parcels so that we could really comfortably meet our setbacks. And I just there was it's National Oil Well, like Megan said, and so those bigger parcels were like little fish basically to them, right? I couldn't really get their attention and gain any interest there. So we landed up the location we're at. The parcel owner is Mr. Joe Lep, and really amenable, you know, we've got a good relationship, and he welcomed the tower, but didn't want to. So he's got a storage facility on the parcel, and then he's got a field in the back and didn't want to basically encumber potential plans for the parcel. So his preferred location was he would have liked to go farther into the corner, I'll put it that way. And we kind of scooched it as much as we could inward to get the best setbacks that we could, but be out of his way, make sure that the parcel's still perfectly usable. And then, I'm not sure, I can I have a whole spiel. I can kind of explain the technology of the tower, our efforts to contact the neighbors. I'll maybe I'll just do kind of a 30-second, and then I think I'll see if there's questions, and then I can really break it down if I need to. But the overview would be that, you know, we picked a location where there's no residences, there's no buildings nearby. So there's no there's no structures within what would be that 110% fall zone. It's just National Oil Well, sort of industrial, like equipment on the ground kind of a thing. So there's no structures there. Again, we did try to get consent from the neighbors. We notified them. We called maybe 15 times, and I couldn't reach anybody. And we made them sign for delivery of the certified mail. So somebody signed and received our notice, but just didn't respond. So we assumed that they didn't take issue with the setbacks, but we couldn't get, you know, them on the phone. And then the last thing is, we really went to great lengths to design this tower so that we could demonstrate that there is not a threat to the health and safety of the community in the highly, highly unlikely event of a collapse. So, you know, the tower is rated to withstand 100 and something mile. I have a structural report on my laptop. I can go over that 100 and something mile an hour winds even during ice, right? This tower can hold up to 16,000 pounds on the top, and then there the rad centers, there's 14, so 30,000 pounds even at those high wind speeds. So the thing is built to last, but in addition, there are these breakpoints at two sections of the tower so that they're just a smidge weaker than the rest of the tower so that in the very, very unlikely event that something causes this tower to collapse, it breaks at those two points and collapses in down on itself within the fenced lease area and not it's not falling over, it's not crossing a parcel boundary. And we, you know, we have a certified engineer's, you know, structural report on the tower that we've ordered to try to do everything we can to show that we absolutely care about these setbacks, and we tried. So that's my initial answer, but I'll go more into it, absolutely, if that's helpful.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for providing that explanation. I wasn't exactly sure how the collapsible function worked, but it's good to hear that it'll remain on Mr. Lep's property. And so in the unlikely event that the worst case happens and there's a collapse, it's not going to interfere with current or future uses on that property. Is the are you, is the applicant committing to have that collapsible structure as part of or as a condition of the conditional use permit?
I, we are committing to do it. We've ordered it. We're going to do it, and we're going to apply for a building permit with that structure. So yeah, whatever we need to do to commit.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner North?
Did I understand you right, that you said that that's designed to collapse within inside the fenced area?
Yes.
So it's not just on that property, it's actually within the fenced area around the tower?
Exactly. So we do a 50 by 50 lease area. We have full rights to do, you know, to place our equipment, AT&amp;T, Dish Network, you know, the carriers' equipment in that lease area. And the tower is designed to not even impact Mr. Lep's property, just our lease space.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hendry?
Mr. Chairman, thanks for being here. And the monopole means there's no guy wires, is that right?
Correct.
So, and this company that they engineered, if they get the wind, I think it's set up here 100, but then if you have an ice storm, then it's 50. And I think the other day, we just had an ice storm that came through. It didn't last a long time, but I, how bad were those gusts? I mean, I think they were 70. And I don't know what the ice was out there, but this, it can happen.
Mm-hmm.
So the the engineer is, I mean, he stamped it that it's going to break somewhere up above, not at the bottom.
So I can, is it okay if I grab my laptop?
Do that.
And I can talk through that structural report?
Just Shelley Neese, 9120 Dock Bar Court, Elk Grove, California. I would just add a couple of comments on that. So first of all, the carriers that locate on these facilities are the most liable parties. EIP Holdings is is going to be sued first, and then they're going to go after everyone on the tower. So the carriers with who have big pocketbooks don't want to be sued. So unless we meet a criteria that's about tenfold what the actual requirement would be to put this tower up by the FCC, they won't even locate on it. So one thing that's really important to remember, because I know Casper has really bad winds, I'm actually representing a site that's going up at the medical clinic, and it's on the rooftop, and we were going to do a floating mount, and we decided to do an attached mount for that reason. So I'm very familiar with what you're talking about. This is designed to hold at sustained winds, continuous winds, that type of capacity on the tower that she's talking about. I say we design it to put up a Mercedes-Benz in the middle of 150 mile an hour windstorm with four inches of ice on the tower. Okay, essentially. So that's why you're not seeing them come down in hurricanes. This is not a common thing that you're seeing or hearing about because we're over-designing because the liability is going to fall on first, as you know, attorneys are going to name everybody in the lawsuit. So it's going to start with EIP, and then it's going to go to Dish, and it's going to go to Verizon, and then it's going to go to AT&amp;T, who will eventually locate on the tower. So.
And then I can speak a little bit more to the structural stuff. So, so, you know, we're in the business of bringing multiple carriers for co-location so we can accommodate up to four rad centers, antenna centers on this on this tower. The I'm looking at the first page of the structural report, and this thing is designed to hold 8,000 pounds at the top rad center, 8,000 pounds in the second, 7,000 and 7,000. An average car is 4,000 to 5,000 pounds. So she says a Mercedes-Benz, but it's really like five Mercedes-Benzes. And antennas are not nearly that heavy, just to be clear. So you might get a couple hundred pounds per antenna or less, depends on the size of the antenna. So we're never going to be maximizing, this is like over-designed, we're never going to be maximizing four rad centers at these weights. The equipment just doesn't weigh that much. We couldn't fit that many antennas. So, you know, we are going to be putting weight up there, but this thing is designed for quite a bit. And the wind speed, you know, of 108, no ice, 50 miles an hour with a quarter inch ice, is sustained wind with that full loading of all of that weight on there. So this tower has a 97.9% structural pass rate. It's well within the accepted, you know, codes. And in addition to all of that, we're designing it with that breakpoint technology. So usually you wouldn't do the breakpoint. We're doing that on top of all of the, you know, structural strength of this tower to just really try to convey to you guys that we feel, you know, the setback exception is going to be safe. So.
Commissioner Hendry?
Yeah, and just to kind of follow up on that, and I know that they've they've, the engineers looked at this, and I can appreciate that, but I'll tell you, the wind really blows. They had air met towers to test the wind because of the wind towers we have to make electricity. And there was one out west of town that imploded on itself, and it was guyed up. It had guy wires all the way up, and it imploded on it. I had to clean it up.
Can I actually add one more thing that might clarify a little bit, too? So I didn't mean to interrupt you, though.
That's fine.
As Megan stated, every five years, we need to be reassessed, right? So this thing's going to be monitored every five years for structural capacity.
Okay.
And also, every time we put equipment up there, we go through the, we ask if we need a zoning permit, you know, we may need a permit depending on if it's substantial modification or maybe not, but we will always be getting a building permit. So when Dish comes along, puts their antennas up, you know, if they add antennas, they're going to have to run a new structural report and get a passing rate at the ice speeds and the, you know, the ice size and the wind speeds and such. So it's it is going to be monitored every time it's added to as well, if that helps.
Well, it does, and, you know, we're just, what my concern would be is that you listed everybody to be sued, including us, because we didn't stay with 110. But.
No, I think you're going to be okay.
Okay.
Because we have conditions of approval, and we need to meet those.
Yeah.
And we're regulated to do that, and if we didn't honor that, then we violated what we made public statement here. I would also add that you have some existing cell towers around the general area, and we're all in the same business. We all know each other, and we're all using the same tower manufacturers. And I would, I would suspect that you have had no problems with those facilities in the windstorms that you've had because they're over-engineering. Every carrier over-engineers these facilities.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Milne?
So I watched the first plan and zoning, and thank you for coming up from California.
Thank you.
During that meeting, you all explained why that that tower is being put where it's at and the future plans of the expansion of of the network of towers. Can you kind of go into that as far as how many or, well, just kind of not how many, but what the future's going to look like for towers coming in?
Yeah, so I'll start, and then I'll have you jump in. So we've got Dish Network coming, and they're building out an entire wireless network. They're looking all over the, all over the country. They're coming in as our anchor tenant. We know that AT&amp;T and Verizon have a coverage gap here as well. We have good relationships with them. We anticipate trying to bring them in. We anticipate them being agreeable to joining onto the tower. And then I'll let you speak to the distances because I don't know exactly like the build-out plan, right? So.
So I specialize in building towers around the country for the past 30 years, and I'm doing a lot right now in Idaho, Utah, Montana, Wyoming. We call it the Rocky Mountain region, and I'm working with all of the carriers. So I work with firms that are build-to-suit companies such as Everest Infrastructure, and I'm talking to engineers. Tomorrow, I'll be talking with the Verizon engineer for this market. One of the reasons that we pursued this facility was not just on behalf of Dish, but the local engineer that's been here forever, he lives over in Cheyenne, basically said, I'm going to have a problem here. I've got a site over by the airport right now. My problem is my capacity. I'm maxed out on my capacity, and I know I need a site right here within the next two years. And so we know Verizon is coming. We then employ our own engineer, outside engineer, to take a look at what's the coverage for AT&amp;T, what's the coverage for T-Mobile. When we build a tower, the cost of that tower, particularly today, is about 40% higher than it was 24 months ago due to inflation, the cost of steel, coax, sometimes we can't even get it. That's the kind of supply chain issue we're looking at. So we've got a $400,000 to $500,000 tower going in here. With the amount of rent that we generate off of a carrier, and the concept is they don't want to build the airplanes, they want to fly them, they look to companies like ours to build them, put out the money, and then they can put their antenna on, our antennas onto the facility, and that way thus saving money, building out more of a network, flying more airplanes, so to speak. And so with that being said, there's not a lot of money in it for a company like Everest to build it for a single tenant. I'll just be straightforward. The return on investment doesn't exist. The only time you're going to build a tower for a carrier is if you know you have two or three or four coming. Two makes it a break even and more profitable, pays back your investment, and it's a more profitable endeavor. So we would not be putting this tower here if we did not have reasonable knowledge that there were going to be a minimum of two, but at least three to four. My suspicion is there will be three to four. The reason for that is twofold, your code, okay, the way you designed your code and did so very intelligently. You don't want proliferation of towers, right? Why not put it in the same place, get everyone on the same pool, instead of having a bunch of towers built, we call it a tower farm, all over the place? Get everybody to collectively get together. And so your code is designed that way. So the next party that comes in would have to substantiate, just like we did, hey, we can't go on that tower because, and, you know, if it's 500 feet away, it's hard to justify that you can't go on it unless it's really short. So you will see this tower fill up. This is a secondary market. I happen to love Casper, but the carriers are in the business of making money. And so they build towers where they have POPs, percentage of population growth. And so they get to you eventually when you have that growth. Some things have changed with the federal government, and the FCC, as they're issuing licenses, they're now saying, yeah, we don't like that attitude. We want to see everybody have coverage, particularly with the COVID thing and people working remotely, rural communities not having coverage. So you have programs like the 911 program for SNET with AT&amp;T saying, hey, we're going to put so many billions of dollars out, the federal government is going to do that to assist in having coverage for our emergency responders. But not only in addition to that, we want to see the public, all of the public, have the same ability to use these facilities. So now the big push is to build out the corridors which have no coverage and the smaller towns and communities that don't have coverage. So now Casper's on the map. Okay? So we know you're on the map. So that's why Dish is here. That's why Verizon is here. They're going to be a year or two away because they haven't maxed out the capacity on that airport site yet, so they need this. It's coming. In addition, they've expressed a need right now for a site north of town, I want to say, going in my memory. I'm actually meeting with the community tomorrow. It's up by the mall. So you have a mall, it's the city of Evansville, okay? And the city of Evansville has a property up there, which is one of the few properties that actually works for the location of a facility. So there is a site needed there by Verizon now, today, and also by Dish. And then there is an additional site on the Wyoming Health Community Center on the rooftop of that facility. That's a Verizon site that will be built this year. And there is a facility that will be built, I have to remember these off the top of my head because I have 60 of them in there that I'm working on. I call it Three Kings, but it's a BP Oil building where the college leases the building. That site is an area where is will be much needed come 23, 24. So you're going to see more and more of this activity. One of the things that you will see is you will see them try to locate on rooftops when and where they can. Verizon has a strong need for, I believe Kaiser, I'm not sure if Kaiser bought your large medical facility recently, and they don't allow antennas on the rooftop of the facility, which is unfortunate because the RF engineer for Verizon really needs that location as well. So Verizon's starting to sniff around quite a bit in the area, and then you'll see Dish, but T-Mobile hasn't arrived yet, but they're getting very aggressive. And I see AT&amp;T, so over the next two to three years, we had kind of a quiet period, and now we have a period where they're starting to invest and put more capital into the building infrastructure. So you will be seeing more of these in in the community or the surrounding community. In my opinion, that's a good thing, so long as they're located in my, I happen to like this site a lot because it's in an industrial park, and that's always ideal, right? Whenever you can mitigate a residential area. But it's going to provide more coverage to your community. They're coming, and more will come. I don't think they're going to overwhelm you, okay? But you're no longer a secondary market. You're still called a secondary market, but the federal government is making a push to have you treated like other communities with a higher percentage of population. And I hope that addresses your question.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
At this time, I'd ask those individuals in the audience wishing to speak in favor of case number 22.01 CUP to approach the lecture. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? If being no one to speak in favor, at this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Being there is no one to speak for or against, case number 22-01 CUP, I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair entertain a motion to approve. Chair and entertain a motion to approve CUP 22.01.
Mr. Chairman?
I would make a motion to approve CUP 22.01 with all finding of fact and recommendations of staff.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved by Commissioner Millen, seconded by Commissioner North. Any discussion? Commissioner Hendry.
Yeah, you know, even the engineer's stamp and everything, I agree with that, but I'll tell you, the reason that I will vote for it is that if it does go the other way, if it falls down, it's gonna be on a pipe yard, not on a building or on a street. So I'll probably go ahead and support this, but I don't like getting away from the 110%.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree that we need to be cautious in deviating from the 110% setback. I think in this case, we've seen, in my opinion, adequate assurances of a, from a professional engineer approving a specific manufactured pull, I think Sabre Industries. So I'm comfortable with it in this instance. Thank you.
Commissioner North?
My biggest concerns, and I appreciate the engineering's design and how much of a fudge factor they put into that, as far as the overbuilding things, but like Mr. Henry said, Commissioner Henry, the wind is a major factor here, and as long as, along with the ice buildup, we have to put our faith in what the engineers say, but I'm a little hesitant, but I will support this, but that's my biggest hesitancy right now, is just the fact of the high winds that we do have, and during the winter months or spring months, if you have ice accumulation on there. I hope I'm speaking out of turn by saying that, but time will tell.
Commissioner Millen?
So I'd agree with Commissioner Nicolason. We do need to be cautious on just approving CUPs, they are conditional. Moving forward, if there are further towers like this, and if they also require a CUP such as this, I would recommend coming to the first meeting with all the engineering documentation from the get-go, so you don't have it tabled on you again. And that would be for any of the tower companies that are out there that are looking at coming to Natchon County, is have your documentation. After that first meeting, you brought us quite a substantial amount, and I do appreciate that. Being a user in that area, and not being able to get out on my phone, and not being able to use data at times, I will really appreciate the tower being there, though.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Hendry?
I've got one other question, just, I didn't see it in here, how much cement is in that, how many yards of cement is in the base of this thing?
That pier will probably go down, and I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, but I'll get it for you, but I will tell you, that pier will probably go down to that ground about 30 feet.
Okay.
Okay? So there's a substantial pier that's going in that ground, and it will be regulated through your building department. So I would trust your building department, and I think because you do have the high winds here, that may be something, I don't know how much communication you have there, but just even with these rooftop mounts that will be coming up, we're certainly considering it, because we don't need anything flying off a roof, that's really bad press, okay? So we're doing an overkill on it, but it's not a recommendation or requirement of your building department on those rooftops to mount these antennas down. So to your question specifically, there will be an overkill done with the mount on this, and your building department should regulate that.
Okay.
And we will meet their requirements. For future reference, on these rooftops, when I talked with the rooftop, the individuals who actually did the roof for the Wyoming Community Health Center, he recommended to me that we go ahead and, not just ballast mount, but mount to the roof, because he had a number of these on roofs where they had a floating design, there's so much weight that it would move around, but they were messing up the roof, and they were moving around, and he was having to go back and repair them. And we didn't want to deal with those repair costs. So that's something of note for you guys in the future.
Well, I just know that the wind towers we have to generate electricity, I mean, they started out on the smaller towers, being 300 and some yards of concrete, I mean, a slab that's 40 by 40 by 50 foot deep, and that gives that thing enough base to really hold it. So I would, I would just suggest that overkill in this deal is good. And that was it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Just a note from my perspective, the fact that this is, as Commissioner Hendry noted, not in a residential area, I'm not quite as concerned, but I would, if you were to come in and ask for this, and immediately adjacent was any type of structure, I would very much like to see a simulation how this thing actually collapses, because I'm having a hard time in my mind seeing how something 150 feet tall stays 25 feet inside a, because it's, you've only got 25 feet, how it would fall, but not an issue at this point, so thank you. With that, no further discussion? How those in favor of the motion signify saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. And now the public hearing open for the consideration of amendments to Natchon County's 2013 subdivision rules. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, rules of the Casper, Natchon County Commission, and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the commission to approach the lecture and state your name and address when I call for it. At this time, Ms. Mills, we have staff report.
Hi, yes, good evening again, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Tonight, I'm here to present to you proposed amendments to the 2013 Natchon County subdivision resolution, that the development department staff has been reviewing our subdivision resolution, and while we're anticipating a full rewrite in-house of the regulations later this year, some of the requirements of the regulations were noted by staff as needing to be amended immediately, mainly to reduce regulatory and budgetary burdens on the county. So staff has amended certain sections of the subdivision rules related to public notice requirements, several sections of the regulations replacing the burden of publication on the county, as well as requiring longer notice periods than required by Wyoming State statute. A table outlining the proposed amendments is attached, and copies will be placed on the county website, and staff will conduct outreach to interested stakeholders within the community. A 45-day public comment period and public hearing is required prior to adoption of the amendments. At their April 12, 2022 meeting, the planning commission approved the proposed amendments to the subdivision resolution and recommended they be forwarded to the board for public comment and approval, and staff now recommends that the board put the proposed amendments out for a 45-day public comment period and set a public hearing for June 21, 2022. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I, Megan, just from a procedural standpoint, so we haven't advertised this yet, there's been no 45-day advertising.
Today, that would be the start of the 45 days.
Yeah, and so really, I guess I'm just being clear, because we can't really adopt or approve any text amendment, so really, all we're asking from the commission is a vote to initiate the rulemaking.
Forty-five days.
Yeah, 45-day rulemaking process. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure that we need a full public hearing tonight, it's, I think, just a consideration of a motion directing staff to advertise and initiate that formal rulemaking process, and then on June 21st.
Correct.
Then we would have the formal hearing and adoption.
Okay.
Yes. So tonight, we're just putting, starting that 45-day clock to put them out for comment.
With that, I'll close the public hearing.
So you need more?
I need, chair and entertain a motion to approve the 45-day clock for consideration of rules, amendments to the 2013 subdivision rules.
Mr. Chairman, I would so move.
I'll second that.
Moved by, it's been moved by Commissioner Henry, seconded by Commissioner North. Any further discussion? Commissioner, nope, nope. There being no further discussion, all those favor signify saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. We've reached the end of our regular meeting. At this point, we'd ask any individuals in the audience who wish to address the commission to come forward. There being none, Commissioner comments? Commissioner North?
Well, this last week, out of Carbin County, there was a ruling that has the potential to affect a lot of people around here, the corner crossing.
Oh, yeah.
It surprised me at how quickly the jury came back with a not guilty. Generally speaking, when they're, when they make a fast determination, there wasn't a whole lot of discussion behind the scenes. That's got the potential to affect a lot of different things. What I do ask is that the sportsmen in the county and in the state respect private property continually, and these particular individuals went to great lengths to make sure that they did not trespass, you know, as far as the way they were perceiving things, and I just want to make sure that everybody respects the private property that is out there, because even though you can get to and go across a lot of public land, that doesn't mean that you're necessarily gonna be in an area that may not cause some controversy. And I just ask that everybody respect that and move forward with that, with this decision.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Millen?
Yeah, so in the news here lately, there's been a lot of talk about Teton County and the increase of taxes and costs of property values by a lot, and we're seeing that in Natchon County as well. Looking at the interim session subjects that are going to be addressed by the state legislature, I didn't see where they're going to look at even studying anything about acquisitional tax. It disappoints me that our state legislature is not seeing the potential of even just a study of redoing our state tax, property taxes, and how that's going to affect future landholders. We'll see, but it would be nice if they'd just at least take the time to see if it's even worth looking at. That's it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Nicolason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would thank the chairman and the other members of the commission for their time and assistance in trying to get me up to speed on some things over the last few weeks. There's a lot to learn, and I will continue to do my best to learn more about this county and how many different things that we're involved in. I have been really impressed with a lot of the staff and employees of the county, and look forward to continuing to work with them and the various boards that I'll be serving on. I would, I appreciate Commissioner North's comments about corner crossing. I think that there is a responsibility on sportsmen to do it right, and I think that there can be continued conflicts, or hopefully, there will be an improvement of relationship between landowners and sportsmen. And I echo some of the comments made by Commissioner Millen, I think that we are all having to tighten our belts, and property taxes are a challenge, and I think that we really do need to explore everything possible to see how we can have an improved property tax system, property tax valuation, and whether that's from state statute and what the legislature's doing, or the Department of Revenue and Board of Equalization down in Cheyenne. I look forward to trying to do whatever we can to be able to have property tax assessments and a process that work for the citizens who are paying those taxes.
Thank you. Mr. Hendry?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. You know, I would echo the statements about the corner crossings, and just because that court case is done, I don't know whether there's gonna be any appeals or anything, it just happened, and I would say there will be, but I have no idea. But that, you can walk across there pretty easily in a corner and go hunt, but then if you get something, you gotta pack it out of there, and that becomes a little tougher. So, you know, hopefully, we won't have too many problems about that, either way, from any of the users. Mr. Chairman, we finally got some rain out west of town and in town, and if it'll just warm up now, it's the time of year when, it doesn't take much moisture, but every little bit helps right now, and we got some, we're gonna hopefully get some more tonight. You know, we're looking a lot better in the last two weeks than we did. But the other thing I would say is CNFR is coming up right away, it's gonna be the 12th of June through the 18th, starts out at 1 o'clock on the 12th with the Bulls and Bronx, and goes through Saturday, the 18th, at the finals, and these college kids are some of the best rodeo athletes in the world, and they're good kids, and they come into town that week and a week before, a few days before, and very seldom, you'll see a bunch of them getting in trouble, any of them getting in trouble. They watch themselves, and then there's a lot of coaches around watching, too, and they just, they come and have a good time, and they like to come to Casper. So, and we're gonna redo the dirt up there, I didn't get a chance to tell you, they're gonna kind of sift through that and add a little sand to it, and that's on its way. The bill, or the stalls out at the fairgrounds that blew down here two, three months ago, Roden Bridge hauled dolomite in there to build that area up before they put the barn up, the barn's gonna get started right away, and so we're gonna have a new horse barn to add to the rest of the stalls out there, and it'll be ready for CNFR. So that's what's going on right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I don't believe I have anything to add at this point, but we, I will tell you that we are absolutely enjoying our new county commissioner. He brings some great ideas already, and is also surprising us with his breadth of knowledge on stuff that we don't know about, that is gonna make a big impact to us, so we are very pleased with our pick, so.